And locked, uh, so this would actually give, give access to our other property. Uh, without having to use any sort of, you know, negotiated right of way.
So, so, um, so the cost outside of this, there's a one hundred thousand dollars we get, say, we get a reimbursement grant for seventy percent. And then there, we would incur the cost of adding a parking lot, um, as well as other.
Improvements.
Improvements.
Yeah, which, you know, obviously, once the property is in the town's possession, that can be a, you know, it doesn't have to be a day one project. Having said that, I have had conversations with Matt, with DPW on the logistics of a parking lot. Uh, in that area there, right off the road, there was a hayfield, so we already have a fairly, it's been, it's, it's overgrown over the last couple of years. But we have a fairly, fairly level spot that would, you know, probably make an ideal parking lot. Uh, a quick look at materials for doing a gravel lot, we would be in the two to three thousand dollar range. Uh, to get a access road from Barker Street into a parking lot, and that would be for about a twelve car parking area. So obviously, there's labor costs and stuff like that, but we, we don't know that until we actually can, you know, do studies on the property, but we, we're at least able to get the numbers that we can get.
Right, and from the proposed parking area, it's only a few hundred feet of woods before you reach a very well established trail. And the Conservation Commission has a very wide network of volunteers. We just reestablished the Trail Club to work on this land and get the trails maintained.
What are the, uh, two landlocked areas of town land? What, what are they used for right now?
Uh, so right now, they're used for, uh, for nothing because you can't get to them. Um, this trail does, uh, touch on a little bit of both of the parcels that we have.
Yep.
Uh, so when you, when you walk the trail, if you wa, if you just walk the trail from the beginning to the end, uh, you're, you're on private property. Uh, we are on one person's private property to get onto town property. Onto the, then onto the private property we're looking at, then I think it hits the other town property, then gets to the state property.
Okay.
So.
Yep.
This, this, currently, this, this crosses over several lots.
Yeah.
Right.
Is that near where the pond in that trailer is parked down the trail, almost to the Red Bridge?
No.
No.
It's way down there.
Okay, it's back toward.
Close to the, the old farmer.
Yeah.
You know, if you were to turn down.
Sunset Acres, you're still in your Sunset.
A farm on both sides, I think, correct? Yeah, it fields.
Um, yeah, I mean, it wa, the beginning section of the trail was, um, was farmland originally.
You would have to drive through personal property there to get to the, to the access of the.
Correct, yeah, there's no, currently, there's no way to actually get to this trail without going on private property. And property owners thus far have been.
Super, super gracious.
Very nice and tolerant, yeah.
Yeah.
As long, yeah, as long as you're not doing anything dumb, yeah. No, I've been down there plenty of times. Um, okay, is there any other questions from the council? Yes.
Just about the Foskett Farm and all?
Yeah, Foskett is there.
Foskett's up more near Pinocchio's, so that's where, if you're looking at the map, that would be the.
Bridge Street.
No, it's over further, so up Barker more, where that sign that says town land is, that's pretty much the Foskett Farm up that way.
Okay. While we're on this subject, not this, but this, or particular parcel, uh, I was looking at something on, uh, here. On the Ware River, above from Emery Street.
Okay.
That part of that river would be very, very, uh, good for kayaking, kayaking, boating, canoeing.
Yeah.
The dam there, you can almost go up to the, uh, Three Mile Bridge in Ware. And, uh, right off Emery Street, off of State Street, it looks like a good parcel of land. We're in a parking area, I was just thinking, um, the old town dump, I don't know if that goes down to the river. I don't know if you've seen, looked at that at all, I talked with, uh, Barry Smith. And, uh, he is, uh.
You mean the old, old town dump, or the one with the?
The one with solar.
Solar on it.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah.
The one that has solar on it?
I'm thinking that.
The one near the old airport.
Not that one.
Right.
The airport.
The airport, yeah.
I wonder if the town owns it, ran, if it was all the way down to the river.
I don't think, I think the old railroad bed is what would bring you down to there, to the old trestle.
Right.
Right, there were plans, the, I know that there were plans a couple of years ago that were presented about blue lines. It was a big thing, that they were gonna start blue lines in town, where they were gonna put in along the rivers in Palmer, where you could put in your kayak or canoe and be able to take them out further downstream. So, yes, there was talk about blue trails, I don't know the status of those at the moment, but.
That's still in progress, there's.
They're still working on it.
I could just interject, we already have a blue trail open on Benning Street, I'm here at the town.
Yep.
Oh, nice.
Little covered bridge, well, the bridges.
Yep.
But we opened that, actually, uh, C four R, she could be oversight of the grants, just hit a paddle from Ware. And down to that point.
Oh, nice.
Put it a dig out on Benning Street.
Yep.
That's awesome, and those are the kind of videos, like, if you did a video like that.
Yeah.
Like this.
Get some attention. Um, is, are the land grants, is that sta, it's a state grant?
That is a state grant, yes.
Um, do you know when they, it would be issued, the awards?
Uh, I believe that they said it generally takes like two to three months.
Yes.
For, for actual award.
Okay.
We'll talk in October.
I make a motion, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we have a motion to support the pursuant of a land grant for this, uh, parcel, L forty-three on Barker Street? Can we have a second? Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Great video.
There's a lot of info.
Yeah, the video, definitely, you guys got a knack for it, so definitely, I would start doing a video series of recreation areas in town, I mean, that's amazing.
No easy task to put together a video.
I, one of my goals was to get videos on all the trails, especially for people who maybe have some mobility issues, they can watch a video.
Yeah.
To see if they're able to handle the trail.
Sure.
Uh, you know, some of the trails can get pretty challenging at points.
Oh, yes.
And you don't necessarily know that till you get to the challenging spot and.
Well, you're right.
It's too late.
We have a face for TV, so you're.
Think the, thank you.
My mom always told me I had the face for radio.
Think, uh, oh, that's funny.
Face for radio, the voice for newspaper.
Oh, right.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay.
Take care.
So, up next, we have a request for the amendment to zoning for an additional cannabis retail.
I have questions.
Me too.
I probably don't have answers.
I'm going to ask anyway.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, allegedly.
Yeah.
The, allegedly, the owner of Cali Cannabis, or partner, one of the partners.
Yeah, he's no longer associated, he was delisted, new filings with the Cannabis Control Commission happened this afternoon.
Okay, so that was my, so we have received correspondence that this project is still going to go through, right? That should not affect the Palmer project.
As of right now, it has no effect.
That was my question.
No longer associated with the project whatsoever.
Okay, I didn't know, because this would be a mute point.
I got it, like, about a half an hour before this meeting.
Perfect, because it would be a mute point to, to talk about adding an additional one if we were going to lose one, is what I was going.
The, the main owner of Cali Cannabis was not associated with any of that stuff, um, and they are moving forward.
Perfect.
Good.
And I'm ready to continue discussion.
Okay.
You're ready to.
Continue discussion on the topic at hand.
Yes. Um, hmm.
So currently in our bylaw, in our, not, uh, not a bylaw, it is a ordinance, so currently in our marijuana ordinance.
Yep.
We have capped the retail licensing.
You've ca, so the, I can summarize all of this for you, because I, I've had this discussion with attorneys and.
Right.
Uh, applicants and, uh, fellow town managers ad nauseam.
Okay.
So you got, so, so when this first happened in twenty seventeen, or thereabouts, right? There was very few, if anything, operating anywhere, it was kinda like the Wild West.
Right, we wanted to be number one.
A little bit of guidelines.
Right.
And, but you had to write something.
Mm-hmm.
So what you wrote was, there will be no more than three, uh, retail cannabis, uh, establishments operating. And so that has been come the word that everybody has glommed onto, especially the attorneys.
Okay.
Operating.
Mm-hmm.
So what gets you to operating? It becomes problematic because there's multiple levels of approval from state, uh, uh, local, multiple agencies within the local.
Right, a lot of those approvals have to come from support from the town.
Correct.
So you need support from the town to move forward to get some of these approvals, which, which I totally understand.
You, you need support from the town to even start, you can't even say hello to people without a host community agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So a host community agreement is functionally, let's call that step one. So those, as of right now, come from the town manager, or a mayor. Uh, or a select board, I guess, in a, in a, in a town with a select board. That is changing, so the law, uh, the, uh, great and general court, the Massachusetts State Legislature, has changed those rules. They haven't necessarily changed the rules yet, but they've, uh, awarded themselves the authority to change those rules. It could become the Cannabis Control Commission that hands out host community agreements. They've also allowed themselves retroactively to go back and affect the over one thousand host community agreements that have already been negotiated throughout the Commonwealth. So people that have existing host community agreements might have them abrogated and changed, uh, by the Cannabis Control Commission. So those, that's in flux, but for right now, uh, I issue host community agreements. Then, uh, folks have to do, you know, they have to file with the Cannabis Control Commission. I, I can't even really begin to explain that process, uh, it's, it's multiple levels of process there. And concurrently, they start to build their, their project, or plan their project. So they have to go to the planning board and get a special permit. And then they have to work with the building department throughout their construction. And even the design of their project before they get under construction, and then they have to get a certificate of occupancy from the building department. So those are the, the four major things that they need, host community agreement, special permit, approval from Cannabis Control Commission, and a certificate of occupancy. So, now we come back to the problem of operating. It's very hard for all of those other officials to unreasonably restrict any of those things to a qualified applicant.
Correct, but even the response that you have in our packet from Merrick O'Connell says, in the first sentence, "The maximum number of marijuana retailers in the town of Palmer shall be limited to three at any one time."
Yep.
But it also goes on to explain that the, um, planning board cannot restrict the number of specials permits that are asked or handed out.
Right.
But it runs down to the end where it says, "It is possible that a potential operator with a special permit, HCA, or even a CCC license, will never complete a project and operate, so the building commissioner may not face the issue of denying occupancy based on the state of potential operators."
Right, but that's not where we are.
No, we are, we have one operating retail, if we're using the word operating, because they just recently, congratulations, they're up and running now. And we have three more who are potentially looking to operate in Palmer and develop.
Correct.
The problem I see, and the problem that I knew you were looking into, was, right, we can't not tell them that they can't have a special permit.
Right.
But then it's a race to the finish line to see who's going to get the two.
Right.
What happens, though, liability wise for the town, if all three finish, and we don't have the additional operating license available?
That is the sixty-four thousand dollar question, um, somebody, if, if all, if the other three applicants all may get to the finish line, and they're before Bonnie, the building inspector, and there's nothing wrong with their buildings or their projects, she can't unreasonably withhold the certificate of occupancy.
One of them, though, according to the town ordinance, though, would have to be held back.
But she cannot, right? You didn't write in your ordinance to give the building inspector the power to withhold a certificate of occupancy.
Well, they can have a certificate of occupancy, but they can't sell marijuana. They can, they can have a building with people in it, but they can't sell what they want to.
Fundamentally, the, the, the problem is, is because there's zero case law for this, we will become the case law.
Okay, then my next question is, how do we fix it? So, so say, for example, we decide to go from three to four.
Yep.
That solves the current problem.
Yep.
How are we gonna fix the problem where we're issuing as many special permits as possible?
Four to five.
So.
Right, then we end up with ten and twelve and.
Yeah, so, to go back, right, so, so twenty nineteen, I come in as the new town manager, and the only game in town was Altitude Organics.
Correct.
And they had major problems. So Silver Therapeutics didn't exist at the time to take over Altitude Organics license and resurrect their, their project site.
Correct.
We didn't have anybody on deck, but everybody wanted to have an operating cannabis place, because everybody wants the revenue.
Right.
So, I have to put out host community agreements without necessarily fully understanding whether somebody's ever gonna be able to complete a project. But without host community agreements, they can't even start conversations with all the other approval process. So, the way that we govern this going forward, if you guys grant this ability to have the fourth license is, I just will issue no more host community agreements. I can unreasonably withhold host community agreements. I'm one of the few people that is under no obligation to grant my permission.
So my recommendation, though, is change the ordinance, propose to change the ordinance to remove operating.
Yeah.
Right.
Because I think that's a bane right now of, well, the issue is right now, we have to reword the ordinance, drop operating, and leave it at four marijuana licenses. Active retail, active retail, or not even active, because we can't say that either, just four marijuana retail locations.
Correct. Yep, you could do that.
And that would stop, because then that would prevent you from issuing any HAAs if we already have four.
Correct. Yep, that would, that would limit my ability to put out HCAs, and that would mean no further applicants.
So going back, I've been on the council long enough where I was involved in the marijuana process, where we, we actually voted on this ordinance. At first, it was proposed to us by the planning board, five.
Yep.
And, and I think it was.
That's under the law, maybe, is the maximum you can have.
Uh, it was a, based on the percentage of liquor.
Licenses.
Right, it's based on the, yeah, liquor licenses.
Yeah.
Is how they put it.
Yeah.
Uh, but at that time, we felt as a council that, once you set the limit at five, you can never take them back. They're out there, you can't, you can't ever retrieve those, and say, whoa, five is too many, let's pull back. So we made a conscious decision as a council to go for three. See this, if not getting fixed, turning into a big issue where we have more than that, and even more than five, when we didn't even want five to begin with. Only because we wanted to see the impact of the retail industry in the town of Palmer, and we haven't seen any of that until just recently, when we just had our first open.
Right.
Like, two weeks ago.
Correct. I personally am not opposed to granting this fourth. Only because it puts the town in a liability that's unknown, a gray area. Um, also, uh, being a counselor and being a part of the chamber, one of the chambers in town, I am pro-business. And I would never want to turn down a business, because they couldn't get their license, even though they put in the time and the effort, and they want to pursue a business in Palmer.
True, I agree.
So why would we not then, um, hell, I guess you'd have to talk to a lawyer, whatever, to, to have the warden done up, where the, the limitation is of how many, whether it's five, ten? I mean, you got what, ten, fifteen different places you can go buy booze in town? Like you said, you know, who are we to control? Look, i- i- if ten businesses, you can come here and survive, so be it, as far as I'm concerned. Um, but let's say, you know, that some, that it should be limited by what discussion through, uh, the planning board, whatever, you know, look, okay, we're already saturated. Uh, we, we've had, say, you went to the four or five, you got five, and all of a sudden, one drops out, another one drops out, because they can't. It, quite frankly, supply and demand type of, uh, thing will dictate and limit how many businesses will actually want to come in, so putting any kind of limit on it, it should be according to your planning departments and, you know, the available spaces, obviously away from schools, just like the liquor stores. You know, so I, I think putting a number on it is, because like you say, you put four or five, and you put five and you did, all of a sudden, for some reason, you don't want that many, you, you can't pull it back, well, you can limit it by just you, yourself, you know, by how, where they can be placed, and whether, they're not gonna come here if they can't build.
Zoning restrictions.
Or, or sell, so.
Right, and in currently, right, and currently in the ordinance, it's only highway business, that's all they're allowed in.
Right.
Yep.
Highway business zoning.
Okay, so, I mean, how many more could you actually put in there? So I'm just saying, that, let, any number i- is, you know, you, you're just pulling a number out of a hat, and you are, or you say your business, but you want to restrict it to only five. What if the town can support six, seven? What, and who are we to say no, to not let them do it, and so, you know, that's my two cents.
I got two cents.
You have a comment?
Yeah.
Sure.
Uh, uh, liquor stores are more still societ, socially, um, okay in the society. There's still some drawback to the marijuana, and have we done, which, I'm not opposed to it. And i- is there statistics done, how many, uh, medical and the other side for the rainbows and stardust rec, recreational? Use, is there a statistic out there, how many of the other stores have on, uh, you know, medical versus, you know, to support more than three? I, I'm thinking more, have a look see if three can be supported without someone moving out and having an empty storefront.
I don't, no, I don't have that data.
Yeah, and.
And so I think that.
But someone else can come in and take over.
I mean, if you, if you look at some other communities, so, uh, North Hampton was a community that went gangbusters in twenty seventeen. Then they had like fourteen of them, now they're down to twelve. So, as, as, uh, Counselor Hebert said, the market will kinda right-size itself.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm just worried about empty buildings, you know, again.
But.
That's not your, your worry about an empty building, the worry is, is hopefully, that building now that's been put there, that somebody else sees an opportunity and come, we can't act control commerce and, you know, who comes in and out.
Right, and I was just gonna say that.
For a business, too.
Right.
That's why I agree with it.
Diner right next to yours, right?
No, more, more, uh, competition brings more people in.
Right.
I'll still undercut them all.
So that brings up a good fact, though, is that you have old properties being revitalized.
Right.
Owl Cycle Shop was in disrepair and closed for a long time, and that's where current Silver Ther, right.
Yeah.
And now you have the corner of Sheer Street, which was in disrepair for a long time, and a lot of people are now, hey, we can actually see traffic coming, because it's a huge cleanup area now.
Old Ice House, it is still that way.
Unfortunately, nobody's going in there yet, but, and then Dr. Gary Wolf's office, you know, that's being revitalized, they're remodeling that building. So it's almost a good thing to have them come in, and new businesses come in, and even if they do close, like Brian said, it may be an opportunity for another business that sees that property as an opportunity to come in and buy it and.
Like, example, my little brother, I think in another month or so, he's opening up a, a spot fell out at the Park, the old Park Street School. So he's taking his business from Sturbridge, his pottery business, and he's moving it into that place there, teaching pottery, blah, blah, blah. You know, so it's always.
Yeah.
Opportunity.
No, I, I agree with, with what Matt has said about, you know, we, I don't want to be the reason why a business can't open, um, based off of a decision that we, you know, the council didn't make. The, the council's original decision was three, and we don't even have three yet. Um, but we apparently have almost four.
Due to the wording, though.
Due to the wording, yes, that, that's why. Um, and, so I, um, I would be in favor with going forward with recommending it to the planning board. I mean, this is just, and, and so my other thing is that, like, you know, we might go start this process. It takes a, a number of meetings to change a zoning ordinance, and by the time we get to the end, we might not have four. And then we can just say, never mind.
Capitalism or crime, one of them might solve the problem.
We've already had evidence of crime in one of them, um, you know, so.
That's, that is a person himself, it has nothing to do with.
The actual business, but it was the co-owner.
It could, it could be an owner, it, Carl's diner, we'll take the diner in, uh, where is it, Ludlow there, that.
Franks.
Yeah, Franks, I mean, it's a person, not the business.
And that was alleged.
If the person.
Associate to.
But if the person.
This guy here got busted for whatever, you know.
If the person is the main, if, if the person is the, you know, seventy-five percent of the funding, though.
Their assets are tied up.
You know?
The can, the culture, the Cannabis Control Commission will get rid of that.
Well, and so that's my, my other thing, is that if the cannabis, like, the Cali Cannabis now has to go to, back to the, uh, Control Commission, and I don't know, maybe they will have a change of, of mind with reissuing, or however that process works, I have no idea.
Hopefully, now someone else says, hey, look, this place is half-built, all set, look.
But it's not even half-built.
There's rocks in the hole.
And it, and then it's gonna become overgrown grass, like.
So if we have a recommendation.
All of this stuff.
So if we have a recommendation for changes to the ordinance, d, is that something we would officially have to put into writing to the planning board? Or is that something we can do here, and say, hey, we wanna change the language and say, we've gotta get operating out of there?
Right.
As far as I understand it, uh, chapter one seventy-one, the zoning chapter, any amendments to it is up to the town council.
Yes.
Planning board might have, like, advisory role, but you guys set the laws.
Right, it comes to us, we recommend it back to them, they write it, they bring it back to us, we vote on it.
Well, if there's already zoning in place, there's actually, because that's what they would, if you had an ordinance, uh, their, their role is to say, okay, look, you can, oh, there, there's a zoning issue with this, blah, 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 part of your ordinance. But now you've already got a zoning area, I don't believe, I mean, ask the questions, I guess, but I don't believe that they would even need to play a role in changing that ordinance that was set by the town council.
Oh, we can change the ordinance, the language in the ordinance, as council?
Anytime, like, they review something, they bring it to us, we have the final say.
So we just have to refer back the extra license back to them?
Well.
Or not even, we can change all of that ourselves?
Yes.
Yes.
Why does it say refer to the planning board?
Because, because this petition isn't coming from the town council, it's coming from whoever, I don't know, Adfor Math, Admath for.
Got it.
Is that where Dr. Wolf's office is?
They bring it to us and we change.
Where, which, which one is this?
That's going to be the one down in Pioneer Plaza, down the Old Tremoras.
No, James McMahon is, is, um, Dr. Wolf.
Oh, is it?
That's what I thought.
I know that two of them are vying for that last.
Street, Thorndike Street.
Yeah, the Plaza guy is by himself.
Okay.
That's, um, Matt Harris.
If they're already zoned.
Yes.
Michael Harris.
If I'm not mistaken, here's, I was made aware that the zoning is all highway business.
Correct, oh, yeah, it's already in there, it's all highway business.
So this place here is already highway business.
Correct, oh, yeah, they're all in the right, all are.
To me, they need nothing to do with the planning board to change, it's, it's a matter of your, your ordinance. Because you're not trying to change.
The zone.
Something from, right, highway business to.
Such, right.
So they're, I, I think they're just reaching out to them, thinking that's where they needed to start, but if it's already a zone, a legally zoned place, they need not to talk to them to do it.
Right.
In March or April.
Right.
Recently, yeah.
Yeah, so now it just comes down to, it's the council's responsibility to change whatever ordinance.
Right, I, and I do feel like, I know we have this petition from this business, but I think, like, we should probably ref, refine it to make it say everything that we want it to say in the end, right? So getting rid of operating saying for.
Yeah, if you, if you guys wanna, uh, go through, uh, James McMahon's language and propose any changes, I will email it back to him.
Subcommittee.
Hmm.
Can we, we refer this to subcommittee?
Right, and it's you guys that are on it.
No, it's me, you, and Carl, I thought.
They didn't change it, so I just looked it up today.
I know I'm on it with Carl, I thought you were still on it.
I thought, that's what, what I looked it up today, so they never, ever changed it, because I looked up who was on it.
Yeah, you guys can refer to whatever you want, though, but if he comes into my office every single day next week, I'm giving him your cell phone numbers, and you guys can deal with him.
Yep.
He gets to be kind of overbearing.
So the language in here says petition for zone change, it is not a zone change, that's the only thing.
So that's.
Ordinance.
It's an ordinance change.
Zoning has already been changed over there.
Right.
So it's just an ordinance change is all he's looking for.
Yes.
Right.
But he, but he worded it as a, a, a zone change.
I think he just didn't know.
But we just need to make sure, cause I think I'm almost positive on the current maps that that business is the last business for highway business on that side. Or does it go all the way through the trailer park place?
You got the the.
You got the transmission and the trailer park. Okay.
Tranny place and then, yeah, New Way Homes or whatever it is.
Yep.
Okay.
There's at least two more on the other side.
Yep, yeah, so I would think that that area is already all set to go, so.
Yeah, cause right across the street from them is the Shell.
Right.
And we also just changed right behind them, right, that street there.
Correct, this is all part of the same parcel, like, contiguous.
Yep, yep, yep.
And um, how, where where's this group as far as um, like, when would their goal date to be open? If they were to have a license and everything, like, everything goes through, when is their goal date to be open?
I'm not certain.
Okay. Um, so I would like to make a motion to refer this ordinance. Change to the subcommittee on ordinances.
I make, I second that.
Uh, we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is a motion to amend uh, the Town of Palmer's Special Speed Regulation Number nine one eight dash A. Ryan, if you wanna just give us a overview of that.
Very, all we are looking to do is change the speed limit in one very particular location. Um, so uh. It's right on Thorndike Street, it's it's right, it's basically um, in front of Liberty Plaza.
So the town has a speed ordinance. That's what we're referring to, right, we have a special, the town has a special. So it's a, the town had one.
Yeah, look how old it is.
I'm just asking, like, yeah, so I, was there any history that you found on that?
It's in the packet.
That that old, very old document, the nine eighteen A or whatever it's called.
Oh, are you asking like why?
Yeah, why did we ever do this back in the day, was there any correspondence or anything?
Some board of selectmen member was like, you know what?
That was it.
I'm sick of going.
I was looking for Sager, cause he was on the original select board, so.
Because you you didn't have Betir's at the time, you didn't have Big Y.
Right, it was probably just thirty-two, right, it just.
Yeah.
Walmart wouldn't have existed either.
Place that was there was the Johnny Liza's place, the tire place, and the car wash.
Right.
Everything else.
So it's just a fun road with a lot of windy turns.
Yes, I've ended in a field in the snowstorm once, I thought there was nothing there burning out. There was no streetlights there.
I make a motion that we approve the change to the regulation.
A second.
Is that the vote we need to take and make a mo- um.
Motion to amend.
Make a motion to amend the special speed regulation, um. To.
Rescind the portion of the speed regulation that is forty miles an hour.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Correct.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So yeah, so there, so Liberty Pla-.
What, what's up?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yep, because there's gonna be a um plaza, a turning lane.
I thought it said thirty.
Whatever.
There's a blind spot coming around that curve.
Yeah, this is gonna help with twenty-five miles an hour.
We're slowing the speed down.
Slowing them down.
Well, they're. Widens the road there.
There's a lot of things.
They're talking about, yeah, there's, this is talk about the new Liberty Plaza going in next to McDonald's, right, yeah, yeah, that's. So they wanna slow down the traffic. If feasibility, if we can, I'm sure they're gonna look into that, but. Right.
What really helps is if people just slow down and pay attention, that road's been that way since Johnny Liza was open, and I'm sure the planning department is gonna make. Special entrance ways in this and that.
Yep.
It's just a matter, people need to hang your cell phones up, slow the hell down.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, we all get it.
Okay.
On that curve.
Yep.
More reason to be going toward you a little.
Well, hopefully, you know, all of this new development and. And new speed limit, we will be in much better shape. Moving on to um, the next resolution for the Church Street Bridge Construction Administration.
So, yeah, I had hoped to be able to include this with the uh, full bridge vote, but I didn't get the proposals until. Uh, basically the day of that meeting, so, and then I had to look at them.
Okay.
Uh, and then I had to work with Ty and Bond uh, to strip out a bunch of things that I didn't think we needed. Um, then they had to rewrite the whole proposal, so this is. Um, adequate construction administration and clerk of the works for the Church Street Bridge.
This was not included in the original money that we had voted.
No.
This is separate, um. Why ARPA funds, hold on, um, that we are deliberating this. Um, why ARPA funds? Why ARPA funds, we did the rest of the project out of stabilization and.
Well, the original uh, bridge proposal ha- either had a combination of ARPA funds and town stabilization. Uh, ARPA funds don't, does not need a two-thirds majority vote. And we need to start expending some ARPA funds, uh, there's a deadline to expend this stuff, and um, I've gotten some proposals, but.
Um, was this project bid under federal regulations?
Yes.
Okay, that was my only question, because, you know, it's all different. You know, you don't have to bid this stuff under thirty B, but you have to bid it under federal regulations. Um, does anybody have any questions?
No.
Have, so have they already started?
Uh, well, yeah, not work that you're gonna see, but they're, they've started staging everything.
Well, I was just, cause I was looking at the timeline and um, they have May. You know, a couple of things that have May and June, and so I was just wondering, like, this contract technically doesn't exist yet. Um, so are they involved in that work, um, how does that all work?
Yes, uh, both Dan Holmes and Andrea LaCass are our two project managers and uh. They they are, they're engineers, so they're they're dedicated to this Church Street Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think they had some reasonable expectation that this would get approved, so yes, they've. They they have been down there uh, working with Dan Roach uh, to get things squared away.
Okay.
Uh, one of the big coordination efforts right now, uh, well, we just got some news about it today that was actually very favorable. So uh, Eversource is uh. Up uh, either replacing or upgrading the gas line that is carried by this bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that work was, we thought going to start in June, um, but it's not. So we're able to, we're gonna be able to coordinate this with Eversource.
And what about National Grid?
Yeah, National Grid is definitely a part of the project, because we have to try to do this without relocating any of their telephone poles.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay. Uh, what what will the balance be on ARPA after this vote?
Uh, after this, we will have a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in ARPA.
Does anybody have any other questions?
No.
Nope. Okay, yes, please.
Resolution, uh, I'm sorry, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, resolution number. Two O two three dash two eight, purposes to approve the use of ARPA funds for Church Street Bridge. Construction, administration and oversight in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. The motion is to transfer two hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars from C L R F, ARPA fund. Two four one two three zero two one to Church Street Bridge account three zero four nine one zero nine. For construction and administration oversight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, and our last resolution of the night is a uh, resolution for mosquito control for a prior year bill. Ryan, you wanna talk about that?
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, I. It's, it sounds like it was an unfortunate uh, thing where. I don't know exactly, either Josh Matthews or John, former chief John Jana Levitz, they had. Two different things that looked like they were, I guess, were similar amounts of money and the checks got missed up, but the mosquito check never got sent anywhere. Or nobody ever cashed that one.
Okay.
From twenty twenty?
From twenty FY twenty, twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen.
I don't know, it's an email that uh, Gabriella got on May twenty-second.
So have we been paying for our membership fee in like FY twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three?
Yes.
And then they were just like, oh, by the way, like.
Did you um?
Must've got an audit, you know, or their their auditor must've picked, that was one of the four percent of their accounts that got picked.
Did you check the validity of the email to make sure that it was something?
I talked to this guy personally on the phone.
Okay.
Cause at first I was like, you're gonna eat this, it was five, you know, many years ago, and he's like, oh, if it was just me, I would, but. This is the state and blah, blah, blah. And then he, you know, they will, they will end our subscription, right? The subscription to the heated seats will will end.
Think it's so strange, um, does anybody have any other comments? I make, oh, you can read it, Bob, yeah.
Resolution number two zero two three dash two nine, purpose is to approve the use of free cash to pay for. A prior year obligation fiscal year two thousand twenty Pioneer Valley mosquito control district membership fee. In the amount of five thousand dollars, the motion is to transfer five thousand dollars from free cash, account is zero one dash three five nine zero zero. To the mosquito control account, zero one five one zero two dash five three zero zero one. To pay the FY twenty twenty mosquito control district membership fee.
So we have a motion and uh, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yeah, just one, did our accountant cross the checks and and made sure it was never cashed?
Yes.
That check, yeah, so, and it's just gone.
I mean, the money's not gone.
Never got paid.
Yeah.
Okay. In favor, what?
Was that, was that Phil and then Carl?
Nope.
We had a motion by Bob and a second by Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other new business?
I do.
Yep, go ahead.
I know I did talk to you, Ryan, the other day, um, Burley Park. As you're driving down, you notice how everybody park on Old Warren Road, they all park on the right-hand side there.
Correct.
I mean, it it could use a little bit of hard pack to get where they're parking up a little bit, but if you look to the left side.
Mm-hmm.
For whatever reason, I I don't know, um, they have all no parking signs on that, the left side coming back towards town.
Yep.
And you have one guard rail there.
Yep.
And to me, it would be a better side for, you know, pull that guard rail out and. It would be little to nothing to run a skid steer down, drop some some hard pack, to have the people be able to park on that side. Versus up against the guard rail, you know, they're unloading their little kids there in the road. Yeah, I think it, you know, obviously you would have DPW director look at it and stuff to to be able, and again, I don't know why there's no parking on that side. It just seems like a beautiful spot that it would take a little work to, so they would be able to park off the road completely. Over onto that side and uh, to go back to when I was a little kid, but it going towards Warren. That section, they put a section of guard rail, I think they put that in uh, to keep people out of the park, we'll say.
Right.
They use the park back behind the the backstops of of those fields there, I don't know if that's another, you know, to just. Because, I mean, they're they're like right up against the guard rail, they got one tire on the road, they're unloading. Children and this and that, and I I think it would, you know, uh, be very little other than. The cost of hard tack and someone running a skid steer to get them over to that side, clean it.
So they would have to, so they would have to cross, so if.
They would have to.
Not thirty-two. Yeah.
Right, so.
The race, the racetrack of that is Old Warren Road.
You're either stepping out into the traffic. Or you're diligently watching traffic and hopefully maybe even put in a crosswalk and.
You'd have to do that.
And a a sign, you know, I mean, people obviously should be aware that, you know, you come around the corner and you see the cars there, whoa, whoa, back down.
They don't, but.
I I know they don't, but.
Yeah, well, I think.
Just some, I I think some little signage and, you know, to be totally off the road, to be able to say, okay. Run, versus opening your door and getting your door, door ripped off.
Right, well, so, okay, I think, well, I would be willing to bet that the reason why there is no parking on one side of the road is. So the people don't park on both sides of the road and create a narrow.
Signs from one side to the, uh, cause like I say, they're parking right up against them guard rails.
Right.
Half on the road.
Yes.
Versus being totally off the road.
But they could also be totally off the road if they use the parking lot that was in Burley Park, like. I drive by there so many times and the road is packed and the parking lot is empty, and I'm just like.
So why not, just, I don't know.
Use the parking lot.
Yeah, uh, so I'm, we're gonna look at it.
Because it's right there at their field, they can get out of their car and walk to the field, I don't know, whatever. Again, they used to have a parking spot just further down.
Yeah.
And then they put this guard rail up, I forget when, you know, so they never did park there, they parked down.
Yeah.
A little further down, just before the high lines, there was a parking area there.
Yep.
But I just, from driving up and through there a lot and seeing, you know, line to line and then looking to the other side saying. I mean, to me, it's, it's it's a wide open spot to be able to, I would rather have them parking there. Versus opening up their doors to traffic, you know, you can, uh, I would be told when a kid, you know, they look twice before you cross the road and. Makes, you know, you you can see around the blind corner that you're taught, you know, it's not a blind corner, you can see and hear and.
Here, right.
Think it's a lot safer place, that's all, so what we do with this from here is up to, you know.
I think.
Council, DPW, director, whatever.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go out and look at it with them on Friday.
I would prefer to people to just use the existing.
Into the parking lot where they should be.
Yeah, there's plenty of parking in that parking lot.
And if that's the case, then that's what you wanna do.
No parking on both sides.
Now, you just go spend money, you put no parking on no sides, then you're gonna get gripped from everybody versus just an easy solution to let them. Park in an area that that's can handle it no problem in. You know, can't worry about where everybody crosses the road, whatever.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just one more thing about Burley Park, do they still have a trash uh, uh, drop-off like for debris there, remember on Saturday? Someone asked me about it, I referred them to you, sorry, Ryan.
Hmm?
I refer them to you to see when it's open.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there subcommittee reports? Um, from the budget subcommittee?
Sorry, just one really quick, I had sent, um.
I did see the email.
Yeah.
That's why I checked, you you need to change the webpage, cause it says that there's.
So who's on this thing now?
You, her and Matt are on this.
Who's really on it?
These three.
So it doesn't, it's not updated to the twenty-three appointment?
Yeah, I'll check that and update it, but, cause I thought it was Carl, Phil and Bob.
And it must be actually the twenty-two's because it's it's saying.
Yeah, that's fine, so I'll update it, but it's Carl, Phil and Bob.
Correct.
Yep.
And it's saying Jessica, Matt and Robert. But I I know. The email that you sent us, I never, you know, I looked at this and it was like, well, I'm not on it, so I never called the meeting.
Barb sent this all, but.
I just never got it, whatever.
All right, yeah, I'll update the website.
I get stuff, I I'll have to follow through when I can't open it, you know, my phone doesn't have the, but I did talk to the chief. And, you know, there's already laws in place that somebody cannot be dumping stuff onto the. And, you know, there's already laws in place that somebody cannot be dumping stuff onto the roads. For me, my view is. Why make more laws? Just enforce what's theirs. It, to me, it shouldn't be a DPW issue. If it comes to they have to go clean it, the first thing they do is they call the police station and say, hey, look, this guy's dumping debris onto the road. It's now it goes to the police department. The police department goes and says, hey, listen, buddy, you gotta clean this up. And I'm assuming there's fines for littering in the road, you know, to me, I don't think the added. Uh, pressure on to the the DPW guy to be the 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 hardline person, I think it should be. The laws that are already there in existence is you're not supposed to be putting stuff and plowing your stuff across the road to use the laws that are already there.
Sure.
Little more to it than that, but I get where you're coming from.
So I have a a report from the budget subcommittee. Matt, Barbara, and I have been meeting for. Past couple of months and we're not done yet, but we're we will have to have a another meeting. With the full council in order to approve the budget, so that's gonna be in the last week of June.
Okay.
Fair enough.
And we're gonna get to see the budget before that?
Yes.
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll be done with it this week.
Very good.
Town manager's report?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. So, uh, you know, these things happen from time to time. We're humans, um, but it's always sad when they do. So I wanna offer condolences on behalf of the town and the town employees to uh Jeffrey Turner. He's our wastewater superintendent. Uh, his mother passed away. Uh, the calling hours for her will be at Beers and Story this Friday, uh, eight AM to nine thirty. Uh, Carolyn Baldiga, she's our town collector. Uh, her mother passed away last week. Uh, the services for that have already happened. Uh, and then, uh. Uh, Chuck Kosenowitz was the town's attorney when I started here, uh, and he had served as the town's attorney for for many years. Uh, prior to my coming here and was a very well-respected municipal attorney, and uh he unfortunately passed away at the age of seventy-seven. On April twenty-fourth. Uh, on brighter news, uh, the Bondsville uh water park splash pad is open. So as it starts to get hotter and more humid, uh, folks can uh bring their children there. Uh, we heard about the Hurnevitz Park ribbon cutting uh Friday, uh, June twenty-third. Uh, and then I think the only other real news was for the. So I was uh mowing my lawn on Saturday, uh, drenched in sweat. It was it was hot. Uh, weed whacking, so I had all kinds of like grass debris all over me, and I get a text. Um, hey, check out this Facebook post. The Palmer Senior Center is closing for good? Uh, no, it is not. There there the the Palmer Senior Center is not closing. It's not closing for good. Uh, n- nobody else is taking over the duties of the Palmer Senior Center. It's going to continue to operate as it always has. As a matter of fact, uh, the center is sponsoring uh two trips in the month of June. Um, to Red uh the Woo Sox in Worcester versus the Red Wings. Um, so please check uh the Senior Center for for all of the great things that they do, but it's not closing. And that's all I have.
Go ahead.
I saw the post, it was sent to me. I'm just curious on what the context was behind it, where the idea came out. That the Senior Center was closing.
I couldn't honestly tell you.
Okay.
That was the first I heard of it, too.
Oh, yeah, I getting text messages like you. I was getting pictures and.
Yeah.
And people are like, what's going on? What's this all about? And I couldn't answer that, and then your response.
Yeah, I I rushed, I rushed into the house and made a quick Facebook post.
I have a quick, just an odd aside, concrete pad out here by the, what is, what's the purpose of that? Just to put the digital boards back on?
Oh, in front?
Yeah, right out here.
Yeah, yeah, the uh, I guess it gets.
And I'm like, that wasn't there a week ago.
Somebody just asked me that same question, so I.
Right, the DPW put it in at the end of last week, uh, I guess, um, sometimes the grass gets pretty soft and the thing starts to sit.
I kinda figured that.
So they wanted a level spot to put it on.
Thank you.
Oddly enough, you guys were the first ones to ask. I have not gotten many phone calls questioning that.
Well, it just happened to me at the light and I was looking over, I saw.
I got a couple text messages. Hey, what's the concrete pad for? I. Glad you asked, because I was gonna ask the same thing.
I noticed that the the board said, you know, the town elections are tomorrow, and then it was just, I was right next to it, and I said, but. It makes sense, because that's where they the digital.
And I think, I think sitting on the grass like that for so long, uh, also corrodes and the wheels freeze up.
That would make sense, too.
Okay.
Getting moisture.
Dry rot.
Mm-hmm. Is there any questions for Ryan?
No.
Is there any miscellaneous correspondence? I didn't have any. Counselor's roundtable? Anybody?
Yes.
I just, oh, good.
After you know.
No, I was just gonna remind again people to vote. Tomorrow are the Palmer Town Elections. Uh, polls open at ten, close at eight. At the two normal polling places, uh, Divine Mercy Parish and Saint Thomas, so please get out and vote if you're at all capable.
Better alive.
Oh, okay.
Nine thousand two hundred registered voters.
Yep. Carl, go ahead.
Yes, I've been attending the Munson GOP uh committee for Republicans. We're thinking about starting one in Palmer. I'll keep everyone informed. I could be the chair. Here we go. We gotta right, right this world.
Well, uh, luckily, the town council is a nonpartisan body, so we will just not talk about this.
Wish the upper echelons will.
Make Carl great again.
Yes, that's right. I was gonna say that, but I think everyone would be turning off the TV.
Um, I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.